... Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America, to the Republic which we sing is one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business, we will commence the regular session of September nine. Your motion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing unanimously, all in this business, so we'll call it a presentation of generals. I see your delegations, business, new business. First item is school day discussion, presentation, Dr. Paul.
Uh, Dr. Paul, as members of the boards, uh, we're gonna have multi folks presenting today. Michael, do you have, do you start or is that boring?
We're all actually looking at the data. Um, we have a lot of data out there. We were giving you this evening, um, just some of the, the data from our early assessments. And so with the presentation here. I'm giving the almost, and Dr. Paul, this was the data that you'd asked for, me and SAT results. So we wanted to make sure that we shared that. Mr. Murphy, anything you'd like to say?
Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward. You can see kind of like our percentages where it's kind of tall with, uh, with the median. Then also basically where, um, the nine hundred is, uh, what WDU recommends as a minimum SAT score. Uh, and then the, um, the ELA and the math, those are, uh, are basically, uh, that top, uh, top or, uh, the upper portion. So you can see we're looking at right around a third of our kids are, are.
I find that, I find this.
So.
Or disturbing.
We, uh, to get the promise, isn't that like a ten eighty? Is it ten eighty from, um?
You know, I didn't get a chance to double check that because.
I think it's ten eighty. So if, if, um, how many, what would be, can we, can we, um, find out like how many kids are getting that score to, to get the prom scholarship to? I'm just curious, is.
Nine.
Nine?
Nine. We had nine that met both benchmarks and the nine was, the nine ninety or greater. The state requires a nine ninety combined score. For math, it's five twenty, for ELA, it's four seventy. So that's the combined, uh, score. And that's why we, we looked at our results. We only had nine out of two hundred and ten students that, um, that met that benchmark, so.
So you know, how did, how many did you sound?
Nine out of two hundred and ten students.
That's a promise because of the SAT.
They didn't get the promise. They didn't qualify for the promise. That's, we only had nine students that met that nine hundred, nine hundred benchmark set by the state.
So how many actually won the, the promise because they got a high enough score on their SAT?
Um, that will have to double check, but to be honest with you.
Because that, that is either in the goal is to get a score high enough to get a promise scholarship? Because these, all these kids are excelling. They have the high GPA, but they're not, they're not getting the cut score.
That's our order.
For SAT. So I was just, you know, but let's see where we're starting with, because that's what we want to have.
So these guys, with this group just starting their senior year, the promise verification scholarships has not been put out yet. Okay, so they'll still have opportunities to retain their kids that didn't get there. But I, again, I, I'm not positive that's the accurate score for them this year, although they've been posted.
The cut score.
Yeah, but the nine ninety is what the state requires. Uh, again, with the, the math has to be a five twenty.
For them to consider that math.
Yes.
But.
Correct.
For them to get money.
It's way higher.
Yeah. And that's ten eighty. But that's a lot of money. It's five thousand dollars for their education, so it's a good, it's, you know. I know it sometimes it's cut hairs, but I do like, I was such a really good idea about, um, last time about, um, training for the SAT and shortcuts to get the answers rather than.
Uh, and, and more people qualify for the, uh, promise by the HDCs or the SAD. Uh, because the score is a little more difficult to get in the SAD. So, uh, and a, but a third of our kids being proficient for college, when a third of our kids are gonna go to college. Thirty percent of our kids try college. Uh, thirty-three percent that the proficiency on it, that's pretty good, uh, on that thirty-three percent number.
Yeah, that was a correct one. I, I appreciate that, because that, that shows a lot of life.
Yeah, if WDU looks for that number, that, that, uh, that helps. Because if we, if we ask, uh, a demographic by our guidance counselors or by our SAT demographic, demographic self asks, are you gonna go to college? And then we're giving them an SAT, which is a college preparation class. And if, uh, if we have thirty percent of our kids going to college and thirty-three percent of them hit the proficiency, I think that's pretty good.
The other thing that we'll, we're gonna run into, where we're gonna run into issues is that, uh, this is the first year that they started test line applications, so the kids didn't have to submit their, their SAT scores. Uh, and as long as they had a good GPA also, they could still receive a scholarship award from, um, all the different universities. And just about every major university now is going to test form entrance, entrance too. Which I think will make it a little bit more difficult as, you know, we try to increase scores. So they don't, like, I think we're trying to lock down.
Twenty-five students get a scholarship, that's used to.
That's good, you know.
Twenty-five students.
Right, that's good.
Well, I'm, I'd like to.
We only had nine students.
But that's.
So that's last year's.
Yeah, but they said she still had twenty-five.
Oh, okay. Okay, please, I see that on scholarship.
And that's.
Not when the kids did the prom.
Right, right. Last year's graduating class.
Okay.
This is, this is this current senior class of the results that we're looking at.
And there were two, two, twenty, two ten? What, twelve, twelve percent of our kids?
How many twenties? Twenty-five. Twenty-five out of two ten is, uh. That's up to.
Yes.
Eleven.
But that's not proficiency that's getting the scholarship, so that's.
Which means that they.
That's a pretty good number.
Yeah, which means that they scored, we had a good amount.
If we only had to use the ACT, if the ACT versus the SAT, the state requires us to take the SAT, which, in speaking, students do better. The, the nice thing about this, having that median score, um, that does shed a lot of light. For that decision, we say proficiency. But that's, that's why I asked, but it's been very ideal. Any other questions for?
Well, and then, and then also we wanted, um.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Information here for, uh, beginning of year data. Um, so throughout the presentation and on the scheduled experience, um, we in the teacher's seat, we call that D R Y, for beginning of year data. The window, um, for that, that assessment was August nineteenth through September sixth. And we have some information that we got from I Ready Assessment and IXL, so this is K to eight. Um, and again, this is just our data source and I'm ready, um, this is our K to four grades. Um, and this also lines up with our science of reading implementation, our third grade success act picture you're hearing about that we're required to report to the state for. Um, and IXL, um, grades one through eight also is part of that assessment window. Um, just some things about the information that you're going to see is the beginning of the year data. Of course, it's before that instructional time with all of the grade levels that you'll see data for here. Um, our students haven't had direct instruction, we're in his interventions yet. Um, and then the little bit about my, talk about tier interventions. Um, I'll get a little bit into that next slide, but that's what helps our teachers, uh, focus on their MTSs. You hear about MTSs, uh, throughout the year as well. So in I Ready, there are three and five level placements that our teachers, uh, look at when they dive into their data. Essentially, it's the same thing, but the five level placement actually allow them a little bit of a deeper look, um, at that mid or high grade level and then that below grade level, um, to just be where their interventions are going, where their instructions are going. So then the three level placement will match up with, sometimes you'll see this, um, this triangle. And in our K to four reading, this is what our overall placement looks like right here. Um, so our, our tier one is, that is where eighty, we want eighty percent of our students to fall. And that's that universal curriculum, or sometimes we're at, you know, universal curriculum, that where your poor reading takes place, your poor math. Uh, but sometimes we know because of the data tells us that some students need a little bit more. And that's where our biggest numbers are, in that yellow area where that tier two, sometimes you'll see those small groups happening. Um, and then your tier three, that's your more intense pullout students. So, um, there's our overall placement divided into tiers, but also we look at the domains in reading. And the domains are, uh, they're, that's a critical skill area, areas that we wanna really dive deep into with our kids. Like phonological awareness and phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, high frequency words. Um, and this is how our kids placed, um, by those domain domains in reading. So overall, we have twenty-two percent in tier one. Um, this right here really isn't so bad. Um, we know.
Do you mean the twenty-two percent in tier three?
No.
Is that, I didn't see them.
This is tier one, the grade is tier one. Yeah, so that's twenty-two percent in tier one, um, sixty percent in, uh, tier two. And then we have twenty-two percent is just, actually that one number. I may double check that number in tier three. I may have, um, probably been pasting that and then have the, the fence off there, but I'll check on that till, yeah.
It's eighteen.
Eighteen.
That's one.
Okay, yes, yes. So, um, so there's our I, there's our five level placement. And this is how each goes to, if you're, if you're looking at that, um, that tier triangle, this is how that overall placement looks in a triangle for our teachers. So in reading, again, there's our domains. And then in a three level placement, this is what. Uh, there again, there's math. Um, so, um, our critical areas. Sorry. Something happened with this lights. Uh, there again, so for I Ready Math, K to four, we have nine percent in tier one, two per, or seventy-two percent in tier two and nineteen percent in those critical skill areas, that placement by domain. Um, that's looking at numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data and geometry. So that's K to four. And then there's that five level placement, so you can, the teachers can dig a lot deeper. Um, this is where a lot of our enrichment groups need to be happening. Um, and then over here, this is where there's tier three interventions where you're gonna have more pullout with, um, smaller groups and individualized instruction. Um, that yellow area there, that's also where our, we want our teachers to keep those groups fluid and focusing, focusing on those critical skills to bump those kids up to, on the whole placement. And that. Um, and then for our middle school, IXL, smoking's all about that.
So the benchmarking that we're using at the middle school, uh, is IXL. And this program here, uh, the diagnostic is what we use here for the math. So this is just a snapshot that we had. So all these kids were placed into testing, so it was all based on the stuff this year. So if you're a fifth grader, we tested all eighth grade, material, seventh period, seventh period. So, uh, you'll see here that, uh, those areas there, you know, there's some of the students struggle here in the beginning. So it gives us a good data point here. The middle school has carved out time in every, every day where they are working on this and using this, uh, snapshots here to start building on these, uh, critical areas. So this is not the only benchmark we're using at the middle school. Uh, we're also gonna be using the state benchmarks and those will be given in January and I believe February. Well, we'll take this IXL snapshot two more times, um, throughout the school year. One coming up, uh, in, I believe, late October, November. And then again, it's sometime in the spring, so we'll get to see as they've been in the class, if we go forward and go forward on that. So, um, we did break it down and I apologize, I didn't realize it would be this small. And I'll email out to you guys and see, uh, the breakdowns here. But those are the skill sets for the fifth graders. And if you'll see there on the, the charts, you'll see one hundred, two hundred, three hundred along the bottom. So that mark there shows, um, every number can sit, is a grade. So if you look at their skills, it shows that most, the majority of them are between a fifth and sixth grade level, some down into the fourth grade, which we anticipate some always lost this from the summertime and we hope about the next benchmark, we'll see that number move forward even further.
That group is basically on the wrong.
Well, if you look on that one, it's, it's a little bit harder to see and I, with that, now you know the sounds you've heard below level at some point on some of these skill sets. Uh, but some of that's just from being summer break and then coming back and then replacing them into, um, stuff that being tested on and stuff in this school. So it's not what they.
I'm just curious, because this is, this is the grade that is the beginning of SFA, right?
Well, SFA is.
Right, it, it started when they were in kindergarten.
That's correct.
So like, this is the group I always wanna go back to just because there are, there, this is the, uh, where we made the most improvement really, uh, as far as like, you know, we changed their curriculum and made that big improvement. But that, this is the grade that shows, um, how that.
How it works.
Yeah. And even with, uh, that, I mean, it's still has done, they, they're a great, they have done the familiar strategy.
And we still do the SFA testing throughout as well, so we'll have this one, we'll give them a report and see if they have to take that as well. So, um, new math curriculum at the middle school, uh, Carnegie Learning, uh, working pretty well. Teachers really liking it, the math here program that they're using. The kids seem to like it, they're using it classroom on a daily basis now, or at least two to three times a week. Uh, but you'll see the snapshots, we broke it down by each grade level. You'll see, you'll start to see the numbers and it's the same thing there. The number that it goes up to, uh, is the overall, will show you what grade level they're on. So if a student takes this test and they get like a seven eighty, then they are in the seventh grade and with eighty percent knowledge of the seventh grade. So, uh, that's just an overall snapshot, but we did break it down so that you can see the different, uh, skill sets that we're working on there. I'll email this out to you, so you have that as well. But the snapshot of the seventh grade with reading and math, um, we had some kids that did really well. We had some kids that we need work with as well. So that intervention period that we have in place at the middle school, we've been pretty kind of special this year.
Yeah, I remember also elementary, um, they also have then the intervention period, um, having, you know, these two. So they're looking at that data for, making sure those kids are placed in these current instructional groups.
We were hoping, uh, seeing the year that we're gonna have our high schools up, report out as well, but there was an issue with Khan in terms of some technology thing. And now I've got it all activated, students started using it this week. In our time that we've met, we've been with juniors that we've got a lot of positive comments up on, so our teaching are really liking it as well. So really hoping that, uh, the next time we report on that, we're gonna have the Khan Academy stuff in the fourteen months. So all juniors have been put into the SAT prep course and they're gonna be working on that in all of the subject areas. And it's supposed to, they asked that we try to get three, uh, units or three strategies done per week. And, uh, they said we'll see if they can approach on the SAT, if we can take that. So we'll have a word report back on. Uh, we did have IXL at high school, but we stopped it this year because of the Khan Academy, but Khan being something more important, uh, to work on with the SAT prep and the skills that can go on. So I'll share this out, if you see you have a, a contact as well, so.
And so one of the things that, um, um, just bring this data back up again, um, and then touch more, it will help. Um, we're gonna do some growth out, grow out for the teachers, those people can dive into the data, so it's gonna be data dives with them within their PDLCs. Um, just really tailor that learning to what this data is saying. Uh, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about I Ready, teachers are really liking the way that that data is coming back. Um, so stay tuned, we have more work to do and work's in progress.
Well, the SAT, um, that's gonna be the, the difficult one. Um, but like Mr. Murphy was saying, we've been, uh, meeting with the kids and we're getting a lot of great feedback. That's one of the, uh, the things that we're asking for on one of the days that we're doing the PSAT to make that a two, two hour, um, early or late arrival for the kids on that day. So, um, we can get them used to that, 'cause we'd like to do that also when they take the SAT. But very positive feedback and, and like Corey and, and Mike and, uh, we're already getting everything together with the Khan Academy. Um, I think we're gonna see some drastic improvement. But the kids, half of the, half the kids, and they're honest with us, they will tell us when they took the PSAT that some of it they didn't take seriously or they got frustrated. One thing that we have learned from our, uh, qualitative data is that they, um, that retention of the Algebra one or and geometry, that plays a big role in it. So that Khan, we really wanna focus on getting refreshment back with that Algebra one, because if they're in Algebra two, time they get to the testing, some of that part they have forgot, uh, on some of the simpler algebra. So, uh, the Khan will definitely help that. So that, it's been very informative, uh, meeting with the kids. So I think we'll see some drastic improvement.
Does anybody have any other questions or points? I, I appreciate you having, uh, given us this benchmark and just, good to see these now at the beginning of the year. So something to measure against, so thank you for that. All right, that concludes that, passes to item B. Uh, item B, Corey Murphy, Deputy Superintendent, request permission for the four items listed under item B.
We need to prove.
Motion to approve all discussion on any. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item C. Mayor James Principal Brokai requests the permission for the four items under item C.
We did prove.
Motion to approve all discussion on any of them.
I think on item four. Just because.
Yeah.
There'd be care for the cops.
Yeah.
Game for little kids, that's not some fun.
Yeah, just for the engineering. Could we change that?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can, so we would need to amend that motion to include that, would that change?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good, good pickup. Any other questions or points on the four items under item C? Karen, you have that, that change, thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item E. Detective C, Principal Workmittel, requests, the item listed under item D. Motion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item E. Long Plott, the regular three K frequent instruction program, federal program, requests permission for the three items listed, three items listed under item E.
You need to break them all.
Motion to approve all discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously. Item F, Dr. Crooks, who in general request approval of the affiliation agreement between Brooklyn County Schools and Brighton.
Need to prove.
Motion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item G, Dr. Crooks, who in general request approval of memorandum of understanding between West Virginia and Global Dennis and Brooklyn County Board of Education. So motion, as a reminder, uh, just from something I remember from the, uh, presidential retreat, just everybody has had a chance to review all this material beforehand.
Really? Do you remember one that was swishing?
I remember.
I think it's a great service, don't get me wrong.
I remember.
I remember these little.
I remember.
Yeah.
Sure you were a bad job.
Yes, he did a good job, brushed, my stomach hurt.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item H, Dr. Crook, request approval of the agreement between Inspire Energy and Brooklyn County Board of Ed. Motion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item I, Dr. Crook, request approval of memorandum of understanding between Selectful Community Organizations and Brooklyn County Board of Ed. Motion, discussion.
Is this just what the middle school says? I think it's right, there's, I don't know, it has a mental health. There's a mental health service. Right. That's right. A lot of it, I think so too. Think.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item J, Scott Doherty, Principal Brooklyn Army in South, permission for students to watch local various EBIS events.
Need to prove.
Motion, discussion.
Yes, um, it says on September twenty-seventh, I approve that date, but it kinda sounds like a boring date.
It does, it says we're very.
It is like it. So they go different times during the year. Well, I would like that he would submit.
I think he dates.
I'm here, he can't.
He will.
Last.
We got that covered.
Okay.
So he does, but he changed.
It does, you're right, that was.
Just to remind us, so should we change like what's one?
I, uh, so that we only approve September twenty-seventh. I may have to motion for that.
So may have to.
So the, uh, the motion's amended to just include the date.
Yeah.
Just for this.
Just for September twenty-seventh.
And he submit the following dates as. This will be approved.
With the, uh, with the amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, Mayor Kane, Mike Beal, Principal Primary South, requests, uh, two items under item K. I need to add, um, for both items, to add Ms. Withers students, thirty IPHRS, Ms. Withers students will be accompanying on both of those items.
Need to.
Motion to approve all, discussion on either. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item L, Man of the Marvio, President of Brooklyn Army, Lord, permission for students to watch the ball, ball department decorate for Christmas.
Need to prove.
In October. Yes.
I think.
This would be a motion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item M, Steve Mitchell, waiting for permission to, to, for equipment, the fair surplus is fixed out for bid.
Need to prove.
Motion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item N, Dr. Crook, request of school calendar is modified, two hour delay for October nine. See, interesting, thank you. Motion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing unanimously, item O, approval of superintendent recommendation to ratify bus aid, three day suspension without pay. That bus aid is Vicki Hunter.
Okay, can we, um, we can move to go into executive session, we discuss.
Personnel?
Yes.
We have a motion to go into, um, executive session for the reason of personnel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At six twenty-eight, board going into executive session. Six forty three, the board of return from executive session, we're out of these executive sessions for discussion of personnel only, no action taken.
Move to approve all of our new business personnel.
Motion to approve all of our new business personnel, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, here's unanimously, conclude that portion. There are two directed remarks, directed reports and remarks, uh, I'll start with that left this evening.
Congratulations to Brittany to, um, becoming our new special ed director, I can't wait to see where you're gonna be at.
Thank you.
Um, I think, you know, whatever. Always.
Congratulations, they need to be long enough. And, um, three directed reports were excellent, thank you very much, you all do such a good job all the time. And, uh, our band did an awesome job down here, John Marshall, they won several wars, good job to them. Our football team lost, but we did play them. I was very proud of them, so that's all you have to say.
I, I agree with all and, uh, no questions.
Great. Uh, Senator Brittany, and congratulations to Mrs. Blonde and Chair of Retirement. Chilling, yeah.
So.
You will be missed, and thank you to all of our directors, we have been asking a lot of you lately this year, and appreciate it. We're trying to tackle a lot of things in the U D S, so it is greatly appreciated. And even though Deirdre's not here, she did represent us very well at our state board.
Yes, she did.
Um, training, she, um, made it very interesting. So, uh, she, uh, she did very well, so.
Amazing.
For help, yeah, did very well, thank you to her as well.
Thank you, I'll go in last, since everything's already been said, we'll do that, Dr. Crook.
Okay. Brittany, congratulations.
Thank you.
A job, uh, well deserved, I know you'll do, do wonderful in that position, and I, I know you have a lot of resources that you can. That you can, uh, call on, I know I haven't, Lori here now, she's a former director of special ed, so, you know, we're. We've hired some really great people, and so we're very, uh, we're very thankful to have you, uh, in this job. God love you for doing it.
In October, we will like data from you too. We'll, we'll give you a month, thank you.
But anyway, just wanted to, to officially welcome you, um, to the, to the ranks of the dark side. Of the administrative side, and so, um, welcome that, you know, we're all here for you. Is this all your family back here?
It is.
That's pretty impressive, wow, let's, uh, let's give Brittany another hand, congratulations. We have some special stories about it, and so it has some sentimental value to you with that, so it's really good to congratulate us.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone for giving you this opportunity.
Good, alright. No information items, no apologies, uh, Mrs. Lanes announced that his next meeting is Monday, October fourteenth, he held his locations, so supply. We're motion to return, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, here's, uh, here's unanimously, at six.